The meeting of the Township of Persipony Troy Hills Planning Board for Monday, July 22, 2024 at 7:30 PM. Ms. Jolie, would you call a roll, please?
Mayor Barbario.
Here.
Mr. DeDee.
Here.
Mr. DiPiero.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Stenziel.
Here.
Chairman Dinsmore.
Here.
We have our Board Planner, Ms. Winter, our Board Engineer, Mr. Canziano, and our Board Attorney, Mr. Lagon.
All right. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at SEC of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. If we could stand for the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. This meeting is open to the general public. Is there anyone here who has something that is not on our agenda tonight that wishes to bring something to the attention of the Board? Hearing and seeing none. We will start our agenda tonight with application 24:514 WH Holdings, 5 Wood Hollow Road, Block 736, Lot 4. This is just for a soil moving permit.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Jason Tuvell, Attorney for the applicant. This was a warehouse project that was approved by the Board by way of resolution to December of last year. The applicants worked with the Board's professionals for resolution compliance. In fact, I think we have a letter indicating that almost all the items are done, so we're almost completed. We also have a lot of our outside agency approvals, including Soil Conservation District Certification. There's no proposed changes to what the Board approved. All we're here is for the soil moving permit that I have Mr. Chaplin from Stonefield Engineering Design to go through.
Excuse me, would people speak a little bit louder?
Sure. We probably should have asked for this when we originally here the first time as part of the site plan application, but it was called to our attention that we needed the soil moving permit as part of our resolution compliance. So I have one witness that I plan on calling, Mr. Chairman, Zachary Chaplin from Stonefield Engineering Design. He testified before the Board on the original site plan application, but we can swear him in and qualify him and go through the process.
Sir. Mr. Chaplin, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Name and address for the record, please.
Sure. My name is Zachary Chaplin, last name C-H-A-P-L-I-N. I'm with the firm Stonefield Engineering and Design. The office is located at 92 Park Avenue in Weatherford, New Jersey.
Counsel, please qualify the witness.
All right, sure, Zach. If you could give the Board the benefit of your educational background, licenses held, whether they're current in good standing, and experience before testifying before other similar boards in the state of New Jersey. Sure. I received my bachelor's degree in civil engineering from the University of Delaware. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the states of New Jersey, New York, and Connecticut, and my licenses are in good standing. I've testified as an expert witness in the field of civil engineering over dozens of boards throughout the state, including this board previously.
Any questions by the Board on the man's qualifications? Hearing and seeing none.
Okay. All right. Mr. Chaplin, we're just here for the soil moving permit. If you could just describe to the Board what's part of that process, as well as complying with the Division of Engineering's review memo dated June 27, 2024? Sure. So we prepared an exhibit that was submitted to the Board, an earthwork exhibit. Basically, what it shows is the cut fill analysis for the grading plan of the site. And what it shows is that there's approximately 31,639 cubic yards of cut, 51,881 cubic yards of fill, for a net of 20,242 cubic yards of fill. I do want to point out to the Board that this does not take into account what's considered takeoffs. So things like the pavement section, drainage utilities, where you need to remove soil to put in stone, or the pavement layers, that was not taken into account, you know, for the analysis, but when you do take it into account, it actually drops with takeoffs to about 2,800 cubic yards of fill. So in summary, it's a pretty balanced site when you look at the grading plan, which is always our goal as the engineer and the designer, is to have a balanced site to avoid, obviously, bringing in or taking off a lot of soil from the property. And looking at the criteria that the Township has, you know, certainly we will meet all the criteria that's set forth in the code. We're also in receipt of a letter from the Township Engineer, which basically speaks to certain fees and requirements that we need to meet, and the applicant is willing to do that as well. All right. And Zach, as part of this process, you've got Morris County Soil Conservation District Certification? Yes, that's correct. And that deals with securing the site from erosion, wind, dealing with drainage issues while soil is being disturbed, is that correct? That's correct. And the applicant will comply with the Township as well as the Soil Conservation District's regulations? Correct. All right. And in this situation, any trucks coming to the property that are bringing soil can come right in off the interstate, correct? Correct. They can come right off Wood Hollow Road. They would not need to drive further down to the site. They can come right off the highway. And you've read the Engineer's Memo, the Township Engineer's Memo dated June 27, 2024? Yes. And just for the record, will comply with that? Yes. And in that letter, the Engineer said, took no objection to the Board approving this application, correct? Correct. And from the, just if you could reiterate from a resolution compliance standpoint on the original application, where we stand? Yeah, so after receiving the approval, we worked on making some changes to the plan that were as a result of just engineering comments and items within the resolution. We then had a couple submissions back and forth, and we've gotten to the point where the plans are acceptable for signature. So at this stage, we've gotten pretty much all of our outside agency approvals, the resolution compliance, so we're pretty much at the finish line there. Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, for Mr. Chaplin.
Members of the Board, or our engineer, do you have any questions?
Yeah, can you give us some testimony on the proposed route?
Sure. So we would expect trucks to come in off 287, and then they would basically come east, make that right-hand turn onto Wood Hollow, and then a left-hand turn onto our property.
And you had, you got your soil counts on the plan, very good. Looks like you have a net fill, so you'd be importing soil?
Correct.
And how many trucks do you anticipate in total? And then duration, I'm trying to get a feel for the duration of that. Did you give any thought to the duration and number of trucks?
Yeah, so when you take into account the takeoffs, like I said, the net is 2,800 cubic yards of fill. Each truck can roughly take about 10 to 14 cubic yards per truck, so that equates to about 230 truckloads. And again, it really is going to be dependent on where you're getting, sourcing the fill from, and, you know, how many trucks there are to bring to the site. So it could happen in a matter of a week. They might do it slower, or it might take two weeks, but I would say somewhere in that timeframe, at the point of the project where they need to fill, they need to fill, they'll bring it on.
And could you repeat the revised net fill that you need to bring after you take in your sidewalks and all your DJ and pavement blocks? What's the, what's the net fill number?
2,800 cubic yards.
2,800, okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Other members of the Board have questions on this witness, on this testimony?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one comment. The Engineer Review Letter, Number 7, Andrew, there's a Township Council approval required, but since this was part of a site plan application, is that still a requirement? Because the ordinance has that kind of as an exclusion?
Yeah, pal, just re, I got the code open, and it just says if it's not, how's it read? This is under, uh...
350 6I?
Yeah, I. Any soil permit which is not, any soil permit application which is not submitted together with a site plan, you know, it's over 400 yards, is subject to review by Township Council. So it appears that it's subject, I bet not, I'll defer back to you on that, but as I'm reading it, it, it seems to have to go to Council since it was not submitted, the soil permit application together with the site plan application.
I would assume that the Township Engineer, when he did, stated Item 7, he said approval is required and is, is underlined.
Right.
So I assume he reviewed that, too.
We can confer with Council on the Township Engineer, just to make sure we're all on the same page, it's fine.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Other members of the Board have...
Mr. Chairman, just quick confirmation, so I believe there is some timing in terms of soil moving, like 824 or whatever, we would comply with that?
Correct.
Thank you.
Other members of the Board have any questions?
I just, I didn't ask this one. So I know you're moving toward compliance, and when does the developer, when does the applicant anticipate on starting demolition and construction?
I would have, I'm not sure of that. I would have to, you know, obviously be subject to the Building Department review and all that, but I don't know.
Thank you.
Are there other members of the Board that have questions? Hearing and seeing none. Other members of the public who have questions on this witness, on this testimony? You can come forward, state your name and your address, and ask a question. Come up to the microphone, please.
My name is Ramesh Mahajan, and I live on Fairfield Road, 19 Fairfield Road.
Would you spell your name, please?
Ramesh Mahajan.
Spell it, please.
Okay. Do you want first name or last name? You got it? Okay. So where exactly is this Wood Hollow Road, coming from Route 10 to Route 46?
Sorry, you asked where, where?
Where is the road?
Are you asking where the project is located?
No, the road. Wood Hollow Road.
Where is Wood Hollow Road? It's, I would call it southeast of 80 and 287, just southeast.
So if someone is coming from Route 10 to Route 46, there is the intersection, there is the exit for 287 north.
Not sure I'm following the question.
There's a depiction right there that has the boundary roads.
The site is bounded by Wood Hollow, Smith, and Jefferson, and like I said, it just sat in east of 80 and 287. It's currently an office building.
The reason I'm asking is, are the trucks going to come on Persipony Road?
It's more near the harbor than...
I don't mean to interrupt, but I think you're confused in the application.
This is not the 2030 Lanidex.
This is a different application for soil move.
Nobody, it says Lanidex Plaza.
Yeah, yeah.
No, that's the second application, yeah.
It's okay. So you see on the agenda, yeah, this is application number one, this is ours. The Lanidex that you were asking about is this one application number two.
Oh, okay, we are going to come over there afterwards?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
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 Thank you.
All right. Any other members of the public have questions on this application from this witness? Mr. Homiak, you have a question?
Yeah, I do.
On this application for this witness?
Any idea where this soil is coming from and if it's contaminated in any way or not?
It's, it has to be clean certified fill from an LSRP. We don't know exactly the source yet, though.
So it is contaminated because it has, it...
Well, we haven't sourced it yet, so it will be clean. We're bringing soil onto the site, we're not taking it off.
Right. That's my question.
You said it would not be contaminated.
We would not bring it...
It would be cleaned.
No, he said it would be clean, would be clean soil.
So that implies that it could be contaminated?
It is not contaminated.
All right, okay.
Other members of the public have questions of this witness on this application? This is, this is not Lanidex. Okay.
Christine Espinoza, 131 Marmore Road. So this is a new warehouse?
This one was approved.
It was in a warehouse that was approved by the planning...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, we just want the information, yeah. So it's already built?
No.
It's going to be built?
Correct.
And how many trucks, loading bays are expected to be at this warehouse?
As part of the site plan, that's already been done. It's just moving the soil.
Okay. And so the site is going to be impact, is coming off of 287, you said?
Correct.
Where?
At 5 Wood Hollow Road.
Okay, so I just have to put it in Google Maps to figure that out, to see if it's going to impact us even more with the 2030 Lanidex?
I have no idea how it affects that application, because it's not the same.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you.
But you don't look there, we don't care. It matters to us. Maybe not to you, but to us.
All right. Do you have anything further?
That's it.
You have questions on this application from this witness?
Just to say, Wood Hollow Road is, is down by, like, the area, down, down in that one of those, one of those side streets.
All right. Any other questions on this witness, on this testimony? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very straightforward, will comply with all the ordinance requirements, will comply with your Township Engineer's requirements regarding the soil moving, so we'd ask that the Board approve the application.
Okay. Other members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to the soil moving permit? In favor of the soil moving permit? Hearing and seeing none. Do we have a motion for a resolution here?
Mr. Chairman.
What are we doing? Are we sending it to Council? Or are we recommending, or are we approving it, but they get to review it?
Well, right now, and that was really my question.
This would be my interpretation of it. We probably should have filed, it did not come up in any of the review letters initially when we filed for the site plan application, or else we would have amended the application to include the soil, the soil moving permit. I think that's what we're doing effectively now, which would negate the need for Township Council to review it. It really is part of a site plan, and we're doing it in conjunction with our resolution compliance. I think it would be duplicative to go to the Council, but that, we'll follow whatever instruction the Board would like us to do, and the Township Engineer would like us to do, but I think the spirit of the ordinance is, if you have a soil moving permit and a site plan application going on at the same time, it's all within the purview of the Planning Board. If all we were doing is moving soil on a site and not doing any sort of site plan application, then I would agree we'd go to the Township Council. I think that's the intent of the ordinance, but we'll follow whatever the Board would like us to do.
The reason why I brought up the question was it's a bit of a gray area because it's technically a standalone application, but it is part of a site plan application, so that's why I brought it up. I would agree with Council that the intent is, when you're, when you have a standalone soil moving application, the Council has the ultimate say, but since the Planning Board has the ultimate say of the overall site plan application, that does not have to go to the, back to the Council. So I agree with Council on that, that's why I raised it. It was a bit of a gray area on how it was...
And I have no issue coordinating with Council, with the Township Engineer, with the Township Attorney, just to confirm that everybody's on the same page with that issue.
Okay, so what we're doing is we're approving this resolution to approve the soil moving permit, subject to further discussions over whether it needs to go before Council.
It would be, whether or not it is a condition of the soil moving application. It's in the Engineer Review Letter. I think a conversation with the Township Attorney would probably be best to determine whether or not the interpretation is accurate.
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay. Do I have a motion to that effect?
So are we approving or just...
We're approving, I have a motion to approve the soil moving permit, subject to Council's caveats.
Okay. All right. Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve application 24:514 WH Holdings, 5 Wood Hollow Road, Block 736, Lot 4, soil moving permit, as per the Council's comments.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Nora, would you call a roll, please?
Barbario.
Yes.
DeDee.
Yes.
DiPiero.
Yes.
Mealy.
Yes.
Napolitano.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Dinsiel.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes. Yes.
All right, thank you, everybody.
All right. Okay, next we are going to call application number 24:506, 20 to 30 Lanidex Urban Renewal LLC, 20 to 36 Lanidex, 20 to 30 Lanidex Plaza West, Lot 226, Lots 3 and 3.2, Zona ROL. We are, I believe, in the middle of the public speaking on this, and we've had a significant amount of public presentation and discussion already.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and for the record, John Iglesino, representing the applicant, we did commence public comment. A number of the members of the public have spoken. The Chairman did agree that folks had one opportunity to speak, so those who have spoken do not, under what was agreed to at the last meeting, have another opportunity to come back and speak. This is our, I think, fourth hearing on this matter, and candidly, we're hoping to conclude.
Well, what we're going to do tonight is that everybody who has already spoken at the last meeting, we'd like you to hold back for now. I'm going to give people a brief chance. There are a couple of people have indicated that they have some more things that are different to say. If you do have something different to say than you said last time, then please present it after those who have not presented to us at this time. So let's get the opportunity to those who have not spoken to us on this, either in opposition or in favor, and I'm going to ask for that at this time.
And Mr. Chairman, again, I think you had mentioned last time that if folks were being repetitive, that, you know...
I'm going to ask that if anybody repeats what they said before, we're going to, we're going to need to cut you short. If you have something new to bring to the Board, if you have not commented to us before, or if you have to amend something specific that you said at the last meeting, then we will entertain those. We do not want you to go long if, if it makes sense.
Have there been any requests to the Board that we're not aware of as the applicant? Because I think we should have been made aware of any requests that came in from the public that would differ from the ground rules that were established at the end of the last hearing. So I don't know where that, I'm just trying to understand what occurred, because what occurred should be occurring in the hearing.
What I want to do is start with the people that have not yet spoken.
Okay.
Have them make their presentations or their points. And then after they're done, there has been at least one person who has indicated that they wish to speak further because they have further information, and I don't want to shut her down.
I defer to the Chairman.
All right. So if you have not spoken to this meeting at the last meeting that we heard this case, if you could please come forward and come to the microphone, identify yourself, and make your point. If you haven't spoken, please...
I didn't speak at the last meeting.
I'm going to ask that you folks come up. I'm going to swear you in, you're going to be placed under oath.
Me?
Yes. Hang on one second. I'm going to, I'm going to ask you that you speak slowly, obviously you're going to state your name, please spell your last, and speak slowly because I am taking notes of your testimony, and you will be subject to any questioning by the Council if he hasn't. Okay?
Well, he thinks it's funny.
Well, I'm...
Because he was laughing over there when the last lady was asking questions. I'm sorry, but I just have to tell him. But with his kids, he'd be a little more concerned. Okay.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Name and address for the record, please.
Rosemary Ricciardi, R-I-C-H-A-R-D-I, 34 Allentown Road in Lake Persipony. We still haven't found out what kind of a trucking terminal this is going to be. That answer was never given to us, and we heard that it's a 24-day, 24/7 operation. Is that true?
Yes.
I'm not here to answer questions, this is a time for public comment. We're not answering questions from the public.
Why aren't you going to answer the question?
We've provided our witnesses to provide answers to testimony, this is a time for, this is a time for public comment.
That was, you were, you were given an opportunity to ask questions of the witnesses earlier on in the application process. Tonight is your time to present a case, not ask questions anymore. You're supposed to, here you're supposed to ask, not ask questions, but present your reasons why you're either opposing...
I'm against the, the terminal. I'm against it because there's kids not far from where this is, where this is being constructed. We have young kids that play there, it's a playground, it's a school ground, you have houses behind there, you're having trucks 24/7 going in and out of that terminal. We don't even know what terminal it is. Is it, what do you, what do you, what are you putting in there?
They gave that testimony earlier.
If I wasn't here, if I was here, I would know the answer. I, I just think it's a terrible place, Mayor, to put a terminal like that when there's this school so damn close to this building. I think it's a shame, and I think if any of your kids were in that school, you would oppose it, too. There's so many other open spots, and we've got to put it behind the school.
Are there other members of the public who haven't spoken on this subject? Please come forward and identify yourself. I think we may have gotten your name in a...
No, we're going to do it again.
I was at my kitchen table trying...
Hang on, Ms. Purzicki.
Pardon?
Hang on, I'm going to swear you in, okay?
Okay.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last for the record.
Mary Purzicki, P-U-R-Z-Y-C-K-I.
And your address?
I'm at The Oaks in Denville. I used to live at 273 Marcella Road in Persipony. I feel I have a right to be here because I lived there for 53 years, and the town has changed significantly. Well, anyhow, I'd like to make a statement. I was sitting at my kitchen table trying to write what I wanted to say tonight. That might have been, have some impact on your decision tonight, but unfortunately, due to the passing of decisions on resolutions and ordinances passed for this application of Lanidex West, this will not happen. From the first decision made by the Town Council on January 24, 2023, the decision you will make tonight, the plan as it known, will pass for an area in need of redevelopment without consideration, with consideration for their warehouse development only. Two studies were authorized by the town and assigned to HRAA Associates. One, a preliminary investigation of the studied area designated as non-condamnation redevelopment area, and the redevelopment plan Lanidex redevelopment area. After reading the plan with time on my hands, which I had, I found this plan for the development from the first page to the 75th page was totally geared for, for warehouse development with 23 bays for tractor-trailers use. There would be no other recommendation, only one paragraph in that report on page 73 did recommend a broadening of land use to include indoor recreation, entertainment, hotels, fitness centers, daycare, assisted living, and multifamily mixed use. I also would like to add my own ideas as disabled vet housing, senior civics and affordable housing, since Persipony only has three complexes, Brookside, 55 Vale, and Broadwood Baldwin Oaks. Since there's an aging population in Persipony, this site would have been a good option. Since there's an aging population in Parsypanee, this site would have been a good option. You choose to listen to any of those. ARC for adults with special needs would also be a good option. The most disappointing part of the plan was the fact that we, the taxpayers, paid with our tax money for the plan, which was so slated in favor of the developer for a warehouse, that one might say the developer should have paid for the study. The plan was written with no consideration or input from the residents who live in the surrounding areas. The study culminated on July 21, 2023, when ordinance 329-09 passed on second reading. Lanedex West Development titled "The Plan." The language in the ordinance changed from the office research to the warehouse, if I'm correct. I would like to meet the person who wrote the language of this ordinance. I refer to the second paragraph, fifth sentence down. Site: Truck-dependent development in a highly accessible location near the intersection of interstates Route 80 and 287, as well as U.S. highways 46 and 202. That's Parsypanee and Littleton Road. And designed a non-residential development that minimizes the potential for impact on the residential areas and the environment and the historic resources. It is clear to me that the people in this audience, that whoever wrote that sentence might, might have never been or might have passed only runs through our beloved residential neighborhoods, surrounded by Lanedex site, never rode around our environmental treasure called Lake Parsypanee, and a stopping place, a stopping place in the spring and the fall for migratory water fowl. Never, I'm sorry, never thought about the students who went to Eastlake School and played out in the playground. And I do have some pictures that I want to show you, if you don't mind.
And Mr. Chairman, well, Ms. Purzicki is doing that, and she's entitled to make her statement, but of course, the redevelopment plan is irrelevant to these proceedings. And this is a site, this is a site plan application. The redevelopment plan is the redevelopment plan. It was approved by the township council. The role of this board, as everyone knows, is not to determine what the use should be. That was done by the town council. And, you know, thus far, we haven't heard any comments on the redevelopment plan. We're just hearing people comment on the use, which is not relevant to the application. So I just, for the record, have to lodge that objection. If, I think folks should be given a certain period of time within which to make their comments, particularly when those comments bear no relevance to the issues before the board. It's prejudicial to the applicant.
We're the, excuse me, but we are the residents of the township of Parsypanee Troy Hills. We are the ones who are going to have to live with your decisions.
Hold on, hold on a second. So, so this part of the presentation, you are, that's why you're under oath, you're giving a statement under oath. This is your opportunity that we promised you, you have the opportunity to speak.
Correct.
Council has the right to raise objections and to cross-examine you at this point. He has raised an objection for the record. Now, your floor is yours, and you can present the exhibits that you have.
Okay, thank you. Okay. One of the exhibits I have is of the schoolyard, okay? And I want to know the buffer of trees that are going to be coming down because this sound...
Ms. Purzicki, do you have a packet of photographs that you would like to submit?
Yes, I do, if you'd like to take them.
How many photographs do you have?
I have four of the school grounds and one of what happened today in Clifton with a tractor-trailer in a residential neighborhood, okay?
Mr...
And the relevance to that...
I objected to the tractor-trailer, which was on Route 3, from what I understand from the news reports, not in a residential neighborhood. It was on, it was on Route 3.
Excuse me, but it abutted the Route 3 accident, abutted, just like we are abutting the area of his Lanedex proposal.
Ms. Purzicki, can you please present the photographs to council? So you can look at them.
Sure.
Counsel, from the last meeting, there were three exhibits. Should we just keep them cumulative?
Right at the back of the house.
Hang on, Ms. Purzicki.
Okay.
Sure.
Should we keep them cumulative?
This is Eastlake School, okay? And the playground area, which is approximately, maybe I would say 25 feet from the, you know, property line. And this is the trees that you people, I believe, will have to take down if you're going to put a sound wall. And the very fact that idling is not allowed in front of the school, well, idling should not be allowed in the back of the school and where this property is. I mean, air does travel, so I just have to...
Counsel, other than the picture of the tractor-trailer accident, you have any objection to the other photographs?
Well, I object to this photograph because I can't really tell what it's of.
Can you, can you just mark them in the top-hand corner? We're starting with B4. You can give them to me, I'll, I'll mark them.
Here, watch it.
All right, the one that you object to is the school in the background. It's in front, the sign is in front of the school where you park the buses and the cars. And the trucks that deliver.
We're going, I'm going to collectively mark these as B, oh, I can't, because you have certain objections. So the playground is going to be B4.
Right.
The two pictures of Eastlake School is B5.
Right.
Okay, B5. This is a picture of a no-idle sign and basketball court that you present as B6, to which Mr., for the record, Mr. Iglesino has objected to. B7 is a photograph of a truck fire, I'm sorry, it's B, F7. B8 is also a picture of a truck fire, and B9 is also a picture of a truck fire. So Mr. Iglesino has objected to B7, B8, and B9. This is irrelevancy.
Yes.
Okay. B6 is also objected to because you just don't know the vantage point of this.
Correct.
Okay. So that leaves B4 and B5 is a picture of the playground and the Eastlake School. Ms. Purzicki, these, these documents have been marked. Would you like them back so you can refer to them?
No.
Okay, I'm going to hold on to these. They'll be part of the record, okay?
Oh, you may do that. Okay, and the reason why I'm showing you those pictures is accidents do happen, even if you don't think they won't. And you were talking about 23 tractor-trailers pulling up to a bay. I mean, I know it doesn't sound logical to you, but if the brakes fail as it was coming down to leave on their road, or if the guy had a, a health problem and wound up putting his foot on the gas, or even, or it's just very possible that accidents can happen, and those kids are playing on that school, in that school ground in close proximity. And a wall is not going to stop a tractor-trailer, as you can see from those pictures. That's the reason why you have them, okay? Now, if you don't mind, can I continue with my statement?
How much longer do you expect to be?
Well, I'll, I'll cut it short. I'll, I'll cut out the problems that I have with, I was going to ask a question, but I understand I can't. And it was on what the Highlands Commission had sent and whether the reply was written to them in, already or not. But never, all right, they never thought about the students going to Eastlake School and playing out in the playground, okay? Never thought of air quality the children were bringing, not caring about what happened when nitro, nitrogen oxide and fine particle, coarse particles lead to the, the formation of ozone and smog in the air we breathe. Nitrooxide pollutant is one of the main pollutants released by diesel engine trucks.
Mr. Chairman, I just have to lodge an objection. All of these things have been, been covered. We had Mr. Bar, Ms. Monica Baraquero, apologies if I mispronounced the name, talked about cancer from emission, banning trailers. We had Wendy Ostal discuss daycare, indoor gym, senior housing, quality of life issues and other uses. So a lot of these issues have already been brought up.
Okay, then I'll skip...
I'm just, I'm just saying for the board that these are not new arguments that are being made.
Okay, then the issue I have, we'll cut it short, if that's what you like. Shucks, I lost my best page. Well, anyhow, when the Highlands did do their report and consistency, their consistency letter sent, I wondered why and did call to find out they didn't get more extensive to water. They didn't feel that water quantity was an issue. But I believe someone in testimony here said that they would probably need a new water main because they didn't have enough water if there was an emergency in the building, or they would have to put two water tanks.
I, I'm going to stop you there because they spent a lot of time trying to address that issue, and you're misrepresenting how they presented it.
So it's not addressed, is that what you're saying?
It is addressed, counsel.
We spent a lot of time, as the chairman said, addressing the issue of fire suppression, water for fire suppression. I will be addressing it again in my closing. I would refer the board and Ms. Purzicki to the extensive testimony on that issue already provided by two engineers.
Yeah, okay. And the only other thing is then, I would mention the fact that the historic aspect of this application was totally, totally ignored, okay? I mean, when you understand the historic research and the property, the historic property, which was discussed, I understood, but off and truly Peterson...
Yes, I just, again, I just, this has been covered in comment by Ms. Peterson. So to the extent the ground rules are that we're not repeating...
Other poor houses when we add on to that, okay? Because I think it is up, it is relevant to the board and to the people in the audience and the people who reside in Lake Parsypanee of what the Petersons' family contributed. Her mom was on that Board of Education for many years. She opened her house, her house, to all those children, okay, to see what kind of history was developed there, all right? Who does that?
Mr. Chairman, this is not at all relevant.
Then they would open up their houses on weekends to understand the history. Yes, it might not be relevant to you, but it should be relevant to the people who want to develop things here, okay? And guess what? There wouldn't be Eastlake School where Eastlake School is today because Julie's mom donated that money for Eastlake School. And they deserve to have some respect.
Yes.
I would like to say more, but that's it, about water, of, of air quality because of my condition.
Thank you.
And other members of the public who haven't, haven't spoken yet, who wish to speak in opposition to this, you can come up and identify yourself.
I don't understand.
I know, we're going to, by the way, because we have a time, we are going to have, start to having time limits, all right? We intend to try to get through this tonight.
I just have something short. Lori Cancilleri.
Hold on, sorry, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give? It would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Name and address for the record, please. Spell your last.
C.A.N.
Please state your name and spell your last.
Please speak louder, please.
You have to speak into the mic.
Lori Cancilleri, C.A.N.C.I.L.L.I.E.R.I.
I apologize. Can you speak louder and spell your name again?
It's on, you just need to raise your voice a little bit. Spell your last name again.
I.E.R.I?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Cancilleri, what's your address?
I am...
Your address?
242 Pittman Road, Parsypanee.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Cancilleri.
Recently, a couple of weeks ago, there was, a little boy was killed only a couple blocks from the site by traffic. So can you imagine what's, what's going to happen when people are trying to pass trucks? Everybody's in such a hurry on the roads around here these days, and they're going to be trying to pass trucks. And this little boy was just recently killed, eight years old. Now, that's not a sign or an example of what things can happen. And that's the first thing that came to my mind when I read that article, is now we're going to have this warehouse with trucks, these trucks coming in and out, people passing them because they're impatient to get around them. That, now, that's a big liability. This is a huge liability, and we're going to keep this in mind. The residents will all keep this in mind, this liability that we have of what I just said. And what about cut-throughs? They're going to be impatient and want to maybe get lost. The drivers are going to be impatient themselves, get lost, they're on time, you know, they're backed up on time, whatever, what these truck drivers do, cutting through down Halsey Road, Allentown Road, Littleton Road, who knows where. We're calling the cops all the time on the wacky people driving in this little community of Lake Parsypanee. We're calling the cops all the time. Now, now we're going to have this exponentially monstrous thing going on in our little, our little nook here. This is just inconceivable. I just hope that you all see how ludicrous this is and just think about this. It's just ridiculous, just for that little boy's sake at least. Of things to come. That's all I want to say.
All right, next witness.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give? It would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Name and address for the record, please.
Christine Espinosa, 131 Marmora. And if there's anyone from, like, the newspaper, I'd like to be anonymous.
Say your address again, I'm sorry.
131 Marmora Road.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Espinosa.
I'm sorry I got here, I'm sorry. It's disheartening to know the mayor and his board members, both planning board and council members, are prioritizing monetary gain over our quality of life. Although we understand the importance of economic growth, this location is not like it for a warehouse.
We need silence. We need to hear what she has to say.
My husband and I chose to raise our children here in Parsypanee so they can have a better and safer upbringing. We left the big urban city of Newark, New Jersey for a reason, not to end up in another urban city. We fell in love with Parsypanee's charm and beauty, which it will lose once this warehouse is built. All of the children in our community use this school's playground as it's the closest walkable playground in the area. The health implications due to the air quality and noise pollution will greatly impact my children, as one has asthma and the other with autism. I can't imagine all the others who also have serious pre-existing health conditions, elderly or young. Most of you have children and grandchildren, and you guys too. Most of you have children and grandchildren, and you guys too, the owners. Would you like for them to attend a school or live in an area where there's tractor-trailers coming in and out 24/7, 24 hours every day? The public safety is our main concern. We have been opposing this warehouse to prevent tragedies from happening. And one occurred the very day after our last meeting here. An eight-year-old boy named Avion Gupta was fatally struck by an SUV while riding his bike trying to go home. His death is the fourth fatality here in Parsippany this year. With the current and new residents of Park Q and the increase of truck traffic, who's to say that will be the last? The increase of traffic will most likely have an impact on delaying residents going to and from work, school buses picking up children, and first responders alike. Mr. Mayor, your statement after Avion's death says that you call for action by the DOT to increase pedestrian safety and for them to respond with a fix on their roads. But this is your town. You must, you must take the first course of action for our safety in preventing this warehouse from happening. I know that you were, you once, I heard you say at the Tricky Trade that you were a boy who attended Eastlake Elementary. I just want you, just as a parent yourself, feel how your mother would have felt if she were to hear this going on. I think she might be with us fighting against this. And I do have some things to put in evidence. And it's really easy when no one lives here, it's really easy for you to just turn your cheek. But just understand, we really care about our community and our children. I had pictures of the children in the playground, but rushing to get here, I left it. I have it on my phone, I don't know if that matters or not, but I do have some things for evidence. And one of them is also from the master plan of the town that shows the heavy traffic areas, which is on Parsippany Road from 202 and 287, and that's without Park Q and this warehouse. So, how do I submit this?
What exactly, so that map, what else do you want to submit?
I don't know if, well, the mayor's statement, I highlighted what I said, and he also said safety cannot take a backseat. I also, uh-huh.
Give that to council.
I also have from the newjersey.gov, from New Jersey State Police, the fatal crash statistics on the four fatalities here in Parsippany. I also have the, the Eastlake Elementary School boundaries map, the school attendance zone, and you can see right there, just see it for yourself.
You want to read that?
I don't know if you even got to.
Well, I have no objection to the master plan document. I do object to the others on the grounds of relevance.
So, that's B10, how many, how many are there?
Well, there's the master plan sheet.
Oh, this is just proof that it's from the master.
Yeah, anything concerning the master plan, I have no objection to.
But it's just the school zone of where all the residents live?
Can you just pass those up so I can mark them?
Okay.
So, we're gonna mark, so we're gonna mark the map from the master plan of B10 with no objection. We're gonna mark the boundary of the school as B11 with objection for relevancy. B12 is the fatal crash statistics, B12 with objection for relevancy. And B13 is a correspondence.
The mayor's.
The mayor's correspondence, B13 with objection from council for relevancy.
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
I remember in the last meeting, Mr. Chairman, you had mentioned that you guys do have the power to deny this, but just afraid of having either a lawsuit from the owners or affordable housing. So, I just want you guys to all think about the lives of the children and the residents that will be affected by these tractor-trailer trucks 24 hours every day, if that matters more than a lawsuit or affordable housing. Thank you.
Another person wishes to come up and.
Is it working, it survived the fall? Okay, good.
Raise your hand, ma'am. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give it would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Name and address for the record, please, please spell your last.
Pat De La Fuente, D E L A, capital F U E N T E, 30 Deerfield Road in Lake Precipiny. Can I sit down?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I have lived in Lake Precipiny area for more than 50 years. When I first moved in, this was a neighborhood of small suburban homes, some of them still summer cottages. I was told that there was some commercial development, but that would be good for homeowners as those businesses would be ratables, that would pay a higher tax rate and keep my property taxes down. There've been a lot of changes in those 50 years. Lake Precipiny is still a good place to live, but not for people with limited income. Housing prices have skyrocketed, and yet our elected and appointed township officials have described it as a blighted community in need of urban renewal, a term usually associated with impoverished neighborhoods and rundown housing. Houses in Lake Precipiny are not rundown, and certainly not cheap, so the blight seems to have come from overdevelopment, more commercial buildings than companies to rent them. The result, empty buildings. Who made the decisions that we needed more commercial development? Was it you, was it previous town councils and planning boards? Now, the same political business leaders with the help of developers and attorneys want Lake Precipiny to have additional commercial building, not offices, but a warehouse, to be accessed by a two-lane road and in close proximity to Eastlake Elementary School. Shame on you. A few years ago, the people of Precipiny came out in droves to draft a master plan, which was eventually published in 2020. Let me tell you, those meetings were well-attended, a lot of input. We expressed our hopes for the future of this community. I don't remember anyone wishing for a warehouse near one of the schools. We again came out in droves last December to oppose the pilot program. And just think about those letters, what those letters stand for, payment in lieu of taxes. That was a marathon session lasting into the night hours, after which the council voted to ignore the public wishes. Adoption of the pilot program has made it possible for lawyers to create clever little loopholes to make believe that Precipiny Road is a major highway, and this warehouse won't create a hazard for people moving into the new condos or the many families living nearby. And then when parents, especially mothers of the schoolchildren, come before you with their worries, their fears, you have the nerve to say, this isn't the right time, you're misreading the regulations, you should've come sooner. Do you understand the term mansplaining? When men condescend to explain something to women so they won't have to worry our pretty little heads about it? Again, shame on you. If you really want to rebuild that area, then create an annex or something that would benefit the local schools or children.
Nancy Brighton, B R. Nancy Brighton, B R I G H.
Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give it would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes.
Name and address for the record.
So, Nancy Brighton, B R I G H T O N, at 15 Maplewood, like the beach.
15 Maplewood?
Yep. So, I am also representing the chair, I'm the chair of the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee for the Town of Parsippany. So, I am gonna talk about historic properties, something a little different. Everybody is aware of the Livingston Benedict House, and what I have here to give to everyone is the conservation easement that's on it, but it also tells you about the properties that are on it, so you understand. The portion of the entire property that is of concern is the barn that's the closest to the road. So, as part of this whole redevelopment and use is making sure we avoid and minimize effects to that barn, which is a contributing element to that national register property.
Can you please present this to council?
Yep, he's got one right there.
What is this purported to be?
It is the conservation easement on the property.
Which property?
The Livingston, the entirety of the Livingston Benedict property.
You're saying that this is the easement on the property that's a subject to this application?
No, it's the easement on the Livingston Benedict property itself for conserv, because it has in it a description of the property to include all of the buildings, and the building on the property that is the closest to the road that leads down to the warehouse is the barn, which is a contributing element to the national register.
I mean, I would object to this because it's not, doesn't have to do with the property.
It is.
It's not an easement that by the witness's own account, and I've not reviewed this, but by the witness's own account, it's not an easement that impacts this property directly. So, I.
Can you, can you better explain your position as to how this is relevant?
Yep, because the barn sits right on that road that the trucks will go down to the warehouse, and so the concern is we just wanna make you aware of that there is the barn, that barn is next to the road, so in coming up with ways to avoid and minimize impacts of this development on that property.
You're not alleging that in any way this development is going to encroach within that easement?
It is, it should not encroach into that easement.
Okay, and the testimony has been that it does not?
Correct. Unless, well, unless a truck hits it, because it really sits right on the road, that's the problem, it's right, correct? It sits right, right adjacent to that road that goes down.
But just to be clear, none of the site plan encroaches onto that easement?
I don't believe any of the testimony was in there. I think we could admit it to evidence at the objection of council for relevancy that we did the other exhibits. How many pages is this? So, it's 20 pages, is there a date on it?
Yeah, it's dated in 2003, I think. I'll look for the date, it's January, I'll let the witness say, but looks.
It is September 2000, October 2000 is the last date on it, last, last signature.
Okay, we're gonna collectively mark that as exhibit B14, and that is just a conservation easement, and your testimony is gonna be relevant to the barn, correct?
Correct.
And how, how.
How the prop, because the barn abuts the road very close, extremely close, that we are concerned that the development, make sure that there's nothing that ensures that it's staying away from that close area of the barn.
I'm just gonna ask you that you keep your testimony relevant to the barn, because that's, that's the structure that is closest, are there any structures that are, that you?
There are no other structures, but my other part of my testimony has to go with Governor Livingston Park, which is non, is non-developed, was discussed as part of this, and it, there was discussion on the turning of the trucks in Governor Livingston Park and taking part of the park. So, what I wanted to provide also was the encumbrance list, of which the Governor Livingston Park is, it's green acres. So, that using, there's probably restrictions in case you weren't aware, I don't know, we didn't discuss that.
This is a separate exhibit?
Yep.
So, this is a.
It's the declaration of encumbrance of all the green acres program lands in the town that includes the Governor Livingston Park.
You're not suggesting, and can you please.
Yeah, I did, he has one.
Council.
Yep.
You're not suggesting that this application would somehow violate the green acres restrictions?
It was unclear because it was not brought up during the current discussion of the turning of the trucks and its effect on Governor Livingston Park. There was some discussion, and I, in the circular argument, how it was resolved as to whether or not anything was going to be cut off of Governor Livingston Park to allow for the turning. So, in case the planning board didn't have it, you have the green acres encumbrance.
Okay, so B14 is your conservation easement, B15 is declaration of encumbrances for Governor Livingston Park. Counsel, any objection to B15?
No objection to B15.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
That's why I just wanted to revise, to ensure, raise awareness of the barn and its proximity to the road, as well as the encumbrance to Governor Livingston Park.
Counsel, do you have extra copies for me? Are these all one, ma'am, ma'am, could you just help me through this, because you have a lot of documents here?
No, there's your full copy.
These are all duplicates, so I'm gonna, I'm only gonna keep one, just help me through this. These are all your copies, I'm gonna return those back to you. And this is the historic preservation, and this is all copies as well. Thank you so much.
All right, other members of the public who wish to speak in opposition, who haven't spoken yet, in opposition.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give it would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God? Name and address, please spell your last, please spell your full name, sir.
R A M E S H.
Do you have a microphone?
Yes. Thank you.
Can you hear?
Yes.
R A M E S H.
Yep.
M A H A J A N.
M A H A J A N. And your address?
19 Deerfield Road.
Mr. Mahajam, go ahead.
Do it this.
Okay. I'm more concerned about the traffic on Parsipony Road. Right now, if anybody's coming from Route 46 to Route 10, it takes like about 30 minutes just to cross the 287 intersection, and most of the motorists, they are cutting through the side lanes because of the traffic, and they are going at exceedingly high speed, even on my street. That is, that is what I wanted to bring about. Also, if someone is on the Parsipony Road, it's extremely hard to make even the right turn, forget the left turn. So, these are the things I want to point out. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public who wish to speak in opposition. Now, we have one individual, if you've, if you've spoken before, please. Now, we have one individual, if you've spoken before, please wait your turn. If you haven't spoken in opposition, please come forward.
And please raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Name and address for the record, please spell your name.
Caroline Fisher, F.I.S.C.H.E.R. My address is 12 Homer Street.
Go ahead, Ms. Fisher.
So I grew up in Parsippany. I had a very good childhood. I had a great start to my education as a former student of Eastlake School. And as we talk about this warehouse, I can't help but think that kids who are going there now and will go there in the future will not have the same opportunities that I had as a student there. Being distracted every 15 minutes with a truck going by while you're trying to learn the foundation of your education, I don't see how that could help you. And also, when you go outside to play at recess and you're supposed to be breathing fresh air and get a break, and you're breathing in fumes, that doesn't seem right. And I think that this would be a truly terrible thing to do.
Other members.
Can you please enter the microphone?
My name is Janet-
Please raise your right hand first. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Name and address for the record, please spell your name.
Janet Theobald, T.H.E.O.B.A.L.D. 86 Patsco Drive, Lake Parsippany. Resident for over 50 years. My question is, with all this wonderful big expansion of this wonderful truck stop, a trucking company coming in. Okay, Mayor, question for you, sir. What's happening with our police department, our fire department, our voluntary ambulance department? This is going to be a big disaster hitting us. How are our citizens going to be protected here in this town? As it is, we have a volunteer fire department. They do an excellent job, I'm not saying they don't, but it's volunteer. Are our men going to be able to deal with these semis coming in?
I'll answer your questions like when the portions are worked, I will answer that question, which regards to the police department, ambulance, and all that, and fire, because there's a process here. So I will answer those questions, I'll answer the questions. Pat, I'll answer your questions, I'll answer everybody's questions that are directed at me personally. So I'll ask, I'll definitely answer those questions.
Okay, I'm looking forward to the answers. Thank you.
Other members of the public who have questions or wish to voice opposition at this time.
Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Name and address for the record, please spell your name.
My name is Jack Rea, 15 Brook Lawn Drive, Morris Plains, New Jersey. I live about a mile and a half from the Eastlake School. I'm a member of the Parsippany Board of Education, but I'm just speaking here on my behalf as a private citizen. But as a member of the board and serving the public as each of you do-
I'm confused. Mr. Rea first said he was not here speaking on behalf of the board, and then he said as a member of the Board of Education. So I think that really needs to be clarified.
I am speaking from my experience as a member of the board, and that we do serve the public as each of you do, and you all have-
Let me just get some clarification if I can. This is important for the record.
Excuse me, it's a fair question, and I'm going to say that for a reason. I'm the mayor, I can't come up as a private citizen, but you're allowed to. Aren't you a Board of Education member 24/7?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I think it's important to know- Counsel, if I may, I have an objection, I'm entitled to make my objection. Okay, it's really clarification, the question of Mr. Rea. Are you here on behalf of yourself, or are you here representing the views of the Board of Education?
I am here representing my own views, not the Board of Education.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, as a private citizen, I expect our both elected and appointed officials, and some of you I know personally, and I think each of you has a good heart and wants to represent the public as best as possible. But sometimes that involves not taking the path of least resistance. Sometimes it involves pursuing something that's more difficult. And this whole, I've only heard about this project in the last month or so, and one of the things that I just wonder, there's plenty of open space over by Campus Drive on the other side of town, and I'm just wondering why there can't be some brokered deal between developers that come up with a better use of the property by the school and then move the warehouse with trucks coming in over by Campus Drive? And I'm sure that there could be something that could be an equitable deal for the developers and for the town.
Chairman, I have to object.
Excuse me.
This is way off.
Counsel, please, I have to answer the question on this. There are things going on at Campus Drive. You know that. We've had hearings on it. You have two, I think you got two warehouses going there, possibly a third warehouse going over there as well. So you know that these areas have been in need of redevelopment because it's been a hot topic. I would say, so when you're talking about this site and all these other sites, and that's why when I close out, I have to explain myself and explain the reason why these things are happening here in Parsippany. You know, we have 19 vacant office buildings, we're going to be going to 25, okay? Now Campus Drive is going to be a very busy area. I bet you the people on Campus Drive are saying, why don't you bring it over here? So, you know, we have, it's a delicate balance, Jack. You know that's a delicate balance.
I understand.
And then when we, when we talk about, when we talk about putting housing in, that's a, no, no, nobody wants housing in the township because it's not really housing, it's called affordable housing, which in set, in essence, is high-density housing. Okay, so this is what we have to grovel with here in the town. We've had COVID, now we have post-COVID. We're dealing with companies moving out left and right, okay? And what's going to happen, that shift is going to go to the homeowners, it's going to go to the residential. Will it affect our police department? It will affect a lot of things in our town. But I know what you're saying, I wish they would go to certain areas, but we don't own the land. The town doesn't own it, you don't own it, the schools don't own it. These are, these are private companies that own property, okay? And as long as they meet the land use requirements, it's very difficult to not approve certain things.
All I'm saying is because they're, because this building is close to a school, that a little bit more effort should be found to, should be expended to find a better solution than putting tractor trailers on a hill that if somebody, if a driver falls asleep, or, you know, gets sick and passes out-
This application was vetted through the Board of Education.
Mr. Chairman, again, I think one of your ground rules was if things were repetitive, that this is getting repetitive.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't have cut you off, Jack, but by the way.
But I haven't spoken here, and this is the first time, and I haven't, at the second meeting that I've been at, nobody's talked about maybe finding a way to structure a deal. And I understand there are economic issues that have to be dealt with, I don't deny that. All I'm saying is that sometimes there could be, there should be an effort to maybe broker a deal between developers and maybe find a better solution than putting a warehouse with giant trucks right next to a school. Thank you.
Okay, Kaylee McIntosh, 16 Allentown Road.
I'm going to swear you in. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Absolutely, I do.
Name and address for the record, please.
Kaylee McIntosh, 16 Allentown Road, Parsippany, New Jersey.
Speak slowly, please. Can you spell your first name?
K.A.Y. L.E.I. G.H.Y.
And your last?
McIntosh, M.A.C.K.I.N.T.O.S.H.
An address, please.
16 Allentown Road, Parsippany, New Jersey.
Okay, Ms. McIntosh, you can go ahead.
Okay, so, I came up with your solution, all right? The town is not happy. You represent us, and we're thankful for all you do, because without you guys, you wouldn't be propelling this town forward, right? You're the voices, and you're the hearts behind us. And we thank you, honestly. Now, if this comes down to a financial price point of revenue, you are not going to have revenue like you believe you are coming in the next two years, okay? Just before my way coming here, Murphy Administration released a new, it's here, a new climate change program for the immense amount of heat that we are feeling, especially with the senior citizens. Climate is critical, and sustainability is the initiative, okay? That is the future. Industrialization is not the future like you believe it is. According to these reports right here, and this is from census.gov, industrialization is on a major decline. I have all the reports from county, from town, I prepared the COA report and the Mount Laurel Doctrine. I took a breakdown through analytics, okay, of all the area that is vacant and available for redevelopment in this county. Now, I know that this town probably doesn't have the most up-to-date software that they use when, you know, assessing situations based on actual numbers and percentages and whatnot for revenue, but I do, okay? I have this, I have access to this. These are all factual numbers, these are all relevant, and these are all accurate. And all this data comes from the government, just so you know. None of it is my own opinion. And when I say from the government, I mean like the government websites, EPA, blah, 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 this, like I was saying.
Chairman, I, again, this is a site plan application. I don't hear anything remotely relevant to the site plan application.
Go ahead.
So basically-
I understand what you're saying.
Okay, so basically, what you're looking at is with agreeing to this warehouse, a lot of fines, a lot of higher property taxes for the people because of these fines. Like I started saying, the carbon budget. The carbon budget is something that we all have to look at with wide eyes, okay? It's our reality. A warehouse violates the carbon budget. Now, the vacant land space and whatnot, there are other initiatives that I don't believe that are being put into, you know, the pot of potential outcomes to come up with that other revenue, like carbon share auctions and whatnot. Green space is going to be the biggest commodity that there is, okay? Now, the decision was between senior housing and a warehouse. I sat down and I worked really, really hard, dedicating everything to me. And I actually found a way to have a higher revenue profit than that of Park across the street, which was high stake and high investment, to generate more revenue for the property owners and for the town, okay? This warehouse, if the application, it was already approved, we know that, this was a bundled land purchase of multiple properties. So therefore, you guys are kind of locked in, I know this. But what we can do is, we could all come to a happy medium about this decision, a realistic happy medium, and we could actually sit down and look at the real numbers, the long-term numbers, that you can see how this will affect with lawsuits when all the children start having health problems, when you can see what the fines from the EPA are going to be, and now their emissions and whatnot. There's better solutions. You just have to have the open mind and the understanding of what technology has propelled us with within the last, you know, couple of years with analytics and whatnot, okay? So I just want to say thank you, that's there. And, you know, as a mother of an eight-year-old who goes to Eastlake, every day he goes to that school and he plays in the playground. He has lymphoma, yeah, environmental cause. There's already a contaminated site the EPA recognizes right there on Parsippany Road. The downward slope of the land caused runoff from that contaminated site. Now, is that the cause of his lymphoma? Well, I don't know. Nobody's going to know that, because we don't have, you know, all God's answers, right? Analytics doesn't go backwards like, and solve that problem. Maybe one day, soon enough, it will. But probability-wise, yeah, it could be a major contender. Now, I have a household of two other people who have lung cancer. At one point, I was in Moorestown Memorial Hospital, Atlantic Health now, and I had somebody watching my son while I was running between Deskovic and another floor, attending to my grandmother and my father, both diagnosed within a month apart. Right after the road on Allentown started being dug up and replaced because of the gas lines, my grandmother wound up getting another form of carcinoma in her throat, chromium 45. The emissions, the particulate, the air quality, yes, it's been said a million times before, but I cannot stress to you enough, this will have dire consequences. This is not the place, it's a high-populated area. The senior housing fulfills the, some of the COA needs and the Mount Laurel Doctrine. I have a solution, okay? And that's all I want to say. Thank you so much. Oh, and one more thing, right here. This is from the town, this is a petition of all the people in the town. So far, we only just started this a few days ago. There's several hundred signatures of other people who believe that this is not a good idea.
I'm just going to cut you off with regard to petitions, because you're in particular, and there actually is case law on it. We can't accept petitions, because in order for you to voice an objection like everybody here, you have to show up and be sworn in and be subject to, subject to cross-exam. So I'm just telling you what the case law says, so-
I just want you to be aware.
Well, again, I understand that, but the board, I'm going to instruct the board that they cannot consider a petition, simply because the people who signed that petition should have been here personally to view their objections, and the board can't just simply rely on a number of signatures, they have to rely on specific objections that, again, everybody here tonight is articulately raising. So I'm going to, I'm not going to accept the petition, actually, well, we will, I'll accept the petition, but I'm going to instruct, instruct the board not to consider the petition as holding any evidentiary weight whatsoever.
That's perfectly fine, I agree to that. I just want to make-
Counsel?
I agree.
I just want it for the purpose of just putting it in the back of your mind as a person.
I can't, I'm going to cut you off. I'm going to accept it as B16. But I'm going to instruct the board that they cannot consider a petition that's having any evidentiary weight whatsoever in their final decision-making, okay?
So do you want to-
Yeah, please, I'll take it.
Do you?
Please. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
B16 for the record, counsel.
Yes.
All right, so we've finished with those who have not presented before in objection. Now, Ms. Peterson, you had requested to come up and make a statement again.
And I know she's going to be heard, but just for the record, I want to renew my objection. That this instruction from the Chair was clear at the last meeting.
I believe, thank you, counsel, your objection is noted for the record. Ms. Peterson, you did indicate that you wanted to make a clarification-
I noted correct one testimony.
-based on your last testimony, and that is the basis for your coming up again here. Thank you, madam.
Okay, at the last-
Now, madam, you were sworn in at the last meeting?
I was sworn in at the last meeting.
You're still under oath, I'm not going to re-swear you when you were- You're still under oath, I'm not gonna re swear you when you were on the record as being under oath. You're still under oath, just name and address for the record.
Julia Peterson, twenty-five old, Parsippany Road. At the last hearing, I testified about a particular council meeting and a tape that I said I didn't think existed anymore, but it does exist. So I was in error when I implied that it didn't exist. And I'm not even gonna go into what it says or what it is about. I'm gonna take that up with the council. But it is indicative of why, for all of us, this was a total waste of time. Thank you.
All right. I am going to allow a brief, very brief, further expansion. For those of you who have spoken to us before, if you have a minute's worth of presentation that you'd like to make, otherwise, I'm gonna cut you short. Mr. Homiak. Please limit your comments to one minute.
Mr. Nicholas Homiak, twenty-six Onida Avenue, Parsippany?
Yes.
Mr. Homiak, you were previously sworn at the last meeting, you remain under oath. Understand that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, I would like to make this council aware that none of these meetings should have even taken place until after June eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four. I have in front of me, and you said you have in your possession the Highlands Consistency Report. So I will bring your attention to page two of the report. Final planning documents must include all required design modifications and/or provide other appropriate information as to the mechanisms by which all Highlands Council conditions will be satisfied. To remain consistent, the applicant must provide documentation to the Highlands Council indicating that the specified conditions have been met. They, these modifications couldn't have possibly been what we saw. They were before, they, they were conditions that needed to be modified. So these meetings, in, in my opinion, should be started all over again because what you were supposedly in a presence of experts and looking at and test, and, and, and we were, many questions were not answered, were not what is required by the Highlands Consistency. So we should be beginning all over again, and.
Thank you very much, that's your minute.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Others who have addressed us before, I have a one minute, if you wish to speak to us again.
My name is Elliot Ruga, I'm the Policy and Communications Director at the New Jersey Highlands Coalition. My last name is R U G A, and I have.
And again, Mr. Chair, I, I object. Mr. Ruga identified himself last time as working for the Highlands Coalition. He gave his address as the Highlands Coalition. He should be represented by council, or that organization should be represented by council. I don't think it's appropriate for him to be here testifying on behalf of the Highlands Coalition.
That's a way to exclude people who can't afford council.
That's the law.
Counselor, I don't know if that's the law.
Well, what authority do you have?
This is my position, this is what I do.
Your personal position?
I'm, I'm here as an individual, if, if that has. I mean, my job is to represent the one hundred and twelve organizations that are a member of our coalition. I do that every day wherever I go.
Hang on one second.
But I'm not a legal counsel, yes, sir.
Problem is, is that there, you have nothing to suggest that you speak with the authority of all of those people. So to counsel's objection, I'm going to agree that you can speak as a private individual, that you don't have any information or authority in writing that was provided to this board, that you speak on behalf of the Highlands Coalition, with that, with that specific authority. So you can speak in your individual capacity as a private citizen of the state of New Jersey. Understand that?
Not as an employee who represents, I'm not a legal representation, okay? I get that.
You don't, I cannot accept that you are, that you represent the entire coalition without something more than your oral presentation to that fact. You understand that? You are not a licensed attorney, you have not been hired by the coalition to represent the coalition, and you may be a member of the coalition, but like a member of a.
I'm not a member of the coalition, I'm a paid staff member of the coalition, and this is, this is what I do every day.
So let me give you an analogy. If I was a member of a union, I cannot stand up at a public hearing and speak on behalf of a union without express authority written by the union.
What if I was an executive of the union?
I would still want the board to give that authority.
I, I can easily acquire that, but it won't take a minute.
Again, you can speak now as a private citizen, making representation based on the testimony you heard and your opinions based on the testimony you heard as an individual, not as a member of the Highlands Coalition. You cannot represent on behalf of the coalition here tonight without express written authority.
Can I bring that express written authority at a later date and you can back?
I have to deal with what's in front of me here.
Okay, okay, so let's just get through this, whatever terms.
Mr. Ruga, now you did present testimony at the last meeting. You were sworn in at that last meeting?
Yes, I was.
Remain under oath, you understand that?
Yep.
Okay, Mr. Ruga.
And I am, I am bringing different testimony, I'm not being repetitive.
Understood.
So, uh, if the chairman has any discretion, I may go after a minute. Let's see how it goes.
Try to keep it down.
I will, I will try to be as brief as I can, and if I go over, it won't be much longer. The idea behind a designation of an area in need of development is to try to attract new investment in an otherwise blighted area that you've not been able to, um, um, attract investment. And however, if you change the zoning merely for the benefit of the current property owner to do something they wanna do that's not consistent with the existing zoning, isn't that spot zoning? And in, in, in your, your, um, resolution where you created this zone, the purposes of the plan, among other things, were to design a non-residential development that minimizes the potential for impacts on residential areas and environment and historic resources. Now, you've heard a lot of testimony today from residents and people who live in historic, um, properties that they are gonna be impacted. And you don't have to drive a truck over that park to impact it. There's a term of art called an area of potential effects. It's defined in the, in the, in the Federal, um, Preser, uh, Preservation Act and in the New Jersey Historic Preservation Act. And an APE is often larger than the project area because it can include indirect impacts. For example, increased noise or emissions or visual impacts to historic properties. And that can extend way beyond the actual boundary of that property.
Okay, thank you, we've got time to.
And I, I got one other thing to say. Why, why I question whether this is spot zoning? Because in, um, according to the New Jersey, um, Election Law Commission database, on February seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two, the Lanidex Corporation made a one-thousand contribution to the mayor's reelection campaign. And in March twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
I have an objection, this is, this is way beyond, we, we're just, this is so far beyond the, the relevancy of a site plan application, Mr. Chairman. And, and every time you give a rule respectfully.
They take a lot, I get it.
They take a lot, I, I think this just needs to end. This is, this is getting, this is getting to the absurd, and candidly, it's presidential to my client.
Purely with site plan at this point.
Well, I, I have this on the record. And there's the twenty-six hundred.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I'm gonna continue to object, this is ridiculous.
Yep. We've, you, you've, I've given you three minutes, not one.
You're very generous, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. I think we've gone through everybody, everybody's had a chance to speak. You've, you've spoken tonight. We're, we're kinda time-limited here.
Mr. Chairman, can I, are you ready for my closing? I, we're at nine fifteen, and I know there's board deliberation and, um.
Yes.
Do you have something very brief, Mary?
I just have one statement that is from the Highlands Commission letter, okay?
Hang on one second, ma'am.
Mary, Ms. Persicki.
Sorry, Ms. Persicki?
Yeah.
Just speaking to the mic?
Sure.
You were previously sworn, you're still under oath, okay?
Yes, okay, okay. This would be number condition six. As required under the Parsippany Troy Hills Highland Reference Ordinance, ordinance number twenty-two-one-oh-five, adopted April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one, amending submission requests for application for development. No application for development may be considered by the township land use board until the project has been deemed consistent by the Highlands Council. The Highlands Council seeks to ensure that any condition placed on the findings of the consistence are properly incorporated into local approval process. And when such, um, projects are approved by the local board, that all relevant conditions have been addressed. And I believe that would have to be to the Highlands in writing. And I also question condition number five, the one that has, uh, similar, the applicant proposed twenty-three loading spaces, fifteen more required by local ordinance. I was wondering, wouldn't that then require a zone, a variance?
The answer obviously is no, and this ground has been covered through testimony. This, this ground has been covered through testimony, and this is not, this is an opportunity for public, uh, comment. This is not a Q and A of witnesses, whether it be through towns professionals or our professionals, and this issue was addressed at length.
There was, I mean, everything was deemed complete before.
And a, and a, and a written notice gone to, um, Mary, I forgot what her last name was.
Mr. Chairman, if I.
Okay, and the other thing of it is, is I don't understand when this application on, um, March, I think it was the nineteenth, um, was filed in the, the board office of the, it was stamped Board of Adjustment. And now here we are, both, the application and the everything, was stamped Board of Adjustment. And that's why I always thought to myself, why wasn't it stamped Planning Board? And if it went to the wrong place, it should have been resubmitted.
That was my error, simply my error, that's it.
Yep. Now, there was one more person that had a statement to make, this is time for comment.
Madam, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony about the give would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Name and address for the record, please spell your name.
Paul Shaw, S H A H, sixty-nine Allentown Road, Parsippany.
Say the address again, I'm sorry.
Sixty-nine Allentown Road.
Okay, Shaw, go ahead.
My two biggest concerns, I'm actually speaking on behalf of the community who has not even yet come in the party.
You can't speak on behalf of anybody but yourself.
Okay, the applicant has used Parkview's data for traffic scenario, and I cannot talk in behalf or I cannot say anything about Parkview?
No, you.
Community?
You can, but you have, you have to present it.
Okay.
As if it were your own, you cannot read somebody else's statement. You cannot present on behalf of anybody else but yourself.
All I'm going to say, that the residents of Parkview children will be going to Eastlake. They will be crossing the road that will have trucks every fifteen minutes. Now, either parents has to drive them and add extra ten minutes to their commute, or they, in a good weather, they'll be walking them across. Do they have to be concerned about these trucks? Not, uh, is that something wise enough to do? No, obviously not. There is a large community that lives below Allentown Road, uh, I'm sorry, below Parsippany Road. I don't know the exact number, but if I have to guesstimate, it's over ten thousand household, houses. They all come up to Parsippany Road to take many other roads to go to work, to go to school, and, uh, and many other reasons. So you are inconveniencing all those households just for economic development. I am for an economic growth in Parsippany. I've been living in Parsippany for over twenty-five years and at sixty-nine Allentown Road for past twenty-some years. I've seen Parsippany grow. There are many sites where, uh, we can dip into for economic growth. This twenty-thirty, sorry if I'm saying it wrong, twenty-thirty Lanidex Plaza site is absolutely not the, the site to collect more taxes. It can be used for something else. I just, I have been part of this process before, redevelopment process. And you, the, the, the members, board members, have favored me very, very well. I am just asking you, requesting, behalf of everybody who's sitting behind me, if I call out who's opposing, every one of them will raise their hand. And I hope you ask at the end of this proceeding to everyone who's sitting in the audience, who is opposing and who is favoring. I bet you my bottom dollar here, no one in the audience will say I'm in favor of it. And so I'm requesting all of you, humanly possible, please, consider children's safety, children's health, communities' health, elderly. There are so many elderly who lives, who've been living fifty-some years, thirty-some years. I bought a house from a ninety-plus-year-old resident, and I'm sure all of these residents will be living another forty-some years. I want to live here forty more years, but not under the circumstances where I have to every two seconds think, oh, is the truck gonna come down by my house? Because the truck decides that there is so much traffic on Parsippany Road, let me cut through Allentown Road. Guess what, there's not enough space. And now the truck hits the subway, truck hits the very first house, and then comes down, and it's a very, very bad hill coming down the Allentown Road. I don't know who is driven on Allentown Road. It's the most driven road in the Lake Parsippany area. Everybody uses the Allentown Road to go outside. The same thing's gonna happen with the trucks because right by the Marmar Road, the trucks can access two-eighty-seven, truck can access eighty east, and many other major highways. I really, really request all of you, in finale, and I don't know if anybody's left to speak about, but if you, if you want everyone to come up because you're denying the petition, and if you're saying the person has to be here to say, I oppose, I hope you give us all here a chance to come up here and say, I oppose. I oppose for this redevelopment at this side, thank you.
Thank you for speaking. Any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time that haven't, or, yes?
Yep. Do you swear affirm the testimony about to give would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Name and address, please. Please spell your name.
Allen, E L L A N, Commando, C A A, M A N O.
Address?
1 Hamilton Road.
Go ahead, Ms. Commander.
I just, I just want to say, I've, my husband and I and our three children have been in Parsippany for 32 years. And it's just so shocking to me, and such a nightmare, this whole discussion. This, to me, is like a no-brainer. I can't, I can't imagine anybody with any sanity or with a heart that can, even in their wildest dreams, imagine a trucking warehouse 24/7, so close to children. It's, it's so sickening and shocking. And I'm so sorry that, that this is what it has come to in beautiful Lake Parsippany. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Do you swear affirm the testimony about to give would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Name and address for the record.
Irina, I R Y N A, K L Y M, last name, 129 Marmara Road.
K A L Y M?
M, like Mary.
Kaylin?
Mm-hmm.
Irina Kaylin. I'm sorry, and your address again?
129 Marmara Road.
Go ahead, Ms. Kaylin.
What I want to say, that I'm against this warehouse. I think it's the worst decision that can, can be made. Because our nice slip in the area, we're all hardworking people. And we all deserve, like after weekends, we want to sit like on our backyards. We want to walk around the lake in a nice quiet zone, you know? Not in the commercial one. All these trucks, they, they will add huge traffic to Parsippany Road. And I'm not talking about truck and trailers. They use local roads, even if it's signed, they cannot use. But still, they driving through those roads. Small cars, they will use road around, around lake, they will use that road to escape the traffic. And we don't have sidewalks around our nice lake. And all people know that in the morning, in the evening, a lot of people, they walk around lake. But we don't have the sidewalk. How about, the traffic will be on a Parsippany Road. And around the lake, road will be busy too, because of, of the traffic on a Parsippany Road. So please, think about our safety. Think about our people, our childrens. We against this warehouse. Thank you.
Do you swear affirm the testimony about to give would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Name and address for the record, please.
Nicole Franzese, and I see a well name, F R A N Z E S E.
Say, spell your last name again, I'm sorry.
F R A N Z E S E.
And address?
251 Madison Road, Lake Parsippany.
Go ahead, Ms. Franzese.
Like a lot of other people here, I grew up in Parsippany. I was a planning professional in New York for 27 years, and ran my own department for 16. I became a planner because of the out-of-control development that happened in the 80s in Parsippany, with this explosion of corporate parks, with no understanding of what would happen in the future. Because even at the time they were constructed, they were vacant. So now Lake Parsippany is being hemmed in, three different sides, with warehouses. Traffic cuts through Lake Parsippany all of the time. It has a very, very direct effect on our life. I see that the town is in a bad position in terms of redevelopment, and I understand that. But the idea that you're making zoning changes for specific projects is unacceptable? None of my planning boards ever would have done that. None of my town boards ever would have done that without considering the impacts at the time you're making the changes, instead of having hearings years later. If you want to get out onto Parsippany Road, or if you want to get out onto Halsey, like come from Halsey to the other side, you have to go where there's a light, or you can't get out. People cut through from the corporate park. There's no detriment. There's nothing stopping these trucks from traveling through Lake Parsippany. Nothing. Have you ever considered conditions? No 24/7. You can only 12 hours, or 8 hours, or 9 hours. Significant buffer areas between the school and this facility. Dampening for their brakes. Because where I live, all I hear is traffic in the middle of the night. You know, not everybody's up between 9 and 5. Some people work third shift. People's lives are 24/7 now. If you're outside at 2:00 in the morning, you hear air brakes. Now you're gonna have that adjacent to a residential neighborhood because they're going down a hill. What are you going to do about that? Have you thought about challenging the applicant? Master Plan has goals. And your job is to make sure there's free and good traffic in the community. You're supposed to look after our safety and welfare. You're supposed to protect our historic resources. And the idea that you're gonna have this amount of truck traffic 24/7, immediately adjacent to that site? My Girl Scout troop went up there, and we learned about gardening. We learned about a lot of things outside. How are you supposed to do that without amount of truck traffic going through, plus the addition of the residential traffic that's gonna be across the street on that, on the other side? There is no way to walk on that road, and you know that. And you're channeling kids. If you didn't have this there, people could come, you could have had people cross at the light, go down that road, and access the school that way. But now they're not gonna be able to do that. This is unsafe. It's incompatible land use for that area. And you all know it. And if you're afraid of getting sued, I don't care. I'd rather pay more taxes and finally stand up to the horrible development that has happened in this community. I really would. Because this isn't helping. My mother lived here, and she died here. And she would come to these hearings over and over to try to stop what you were doing. And you never listened. Are you ever gonna listen to what we want? I mean, Lake Parsippany is being, it's just being turned into something it shouldn't. You're turning down small cottages, putting up these big, huge houses that are looming over, over other houses. The point of planning and zoning is to safeguard our community.
Mr. Chairman, good.
I urge you to reread the goals that are in our master plan and see if your decision is compatible with those goals. Because I didn't work on the master plan just for the fun of it. My mother was dying, and I took time out to read those goals to make sure that they would hopefully provide some kind of guide to you about how you're supposed to make these decisions. Thank you.
Anyone else hearing and seeing none? This ends the public portion of tonight's meeting. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, Ms... Counselor, are you ready? Yeah. I'm charged, okay. First of all, I was not laughing at you. No, I, my, no, my client gestured, and I want to, first of all, he was, he was right over there. He was gesturing. So I don't want you to feel like there was, you know, anybody laughing at you or laughing at anybody else. I wanted to say that. I understand that. I wanted to say, and I... I understand, and I live here too. But I just want, no, but I live in Precipiny. And I just wanted to make sure that you understood that. Mr. Chairman, on behalf of the applicant and the professional team, we want to thank the board, each and every member, for your time and attention to this application. You're well informed, asked probative questions. And in our view, probably made the application better. This has been a long and multi-tiered process, public process, under the New Jersey redevelopment law. It began with the mayor and council recognizing that vacant office buildings are a blight on Precipiny and do not contribute in any way towards the public good. The mayor and council recognized that zoning alone could not and would not fix the problem as it relates to this site. And candidly, the market responded with two uses. Multi-family residential and warehouse use. It would be a warehouse use that actually serves the local community. It's not a distribution center for a region. The policymakers decided on the latter, the town council. And we have worked with them and the board, and the board's professionals and the towns' professionals to create this project. The board recommended that the subject area be declared in need of redevelopment. The board determined that the redevelopment plan, which creates the new zoning for this property, was not inconsistent with the master plan. And the redevelopment plan was unanimously approved by the township council. And that's how this process is supposed to work. It's supposed to work with the redeveloper and the township working together in a collaborative way to create a plan that benefits both. Prior to the commencement of the public hearings, we met with representatives of the Board of Education, Park Troy Funeral Home, and the Petersons. This application commenced on May 20th, was carried to June 3rd, where no testimony was heard, then carried to June 10th, and then July 8th, and finally this evening. You have heard testimony from two civil engineers from Langdon, Dan Miola on May 20th, and John Coty on June 10th. Mr. Coty, the primary project engineer, was unable to attend the May 20th hearing due to a family medical emergency. On May 20th, Mr. Miola provided testimony regarding the project. He emphasized that this project would provide a community environmental benefit, especially for those south of the property, including Lake Parsippany with respect to the environment, because the property in its redeveloped state will capture and treat groundwater in accordance with the latest NJDEP rules and regulations. So that there would be a direct benefit to the lake as a result of this project. Also, on May 20th, you heard testimony from the applicant's sound expert, Mr. Mueller. His testimony was that the state and local noise requirements will be met. Significantly, the applicant is not seeking any relief with regard to noise. And the applicant understands that as a condition of approval, that the applicant will have an ongoing obligation to comply with those noise regulations. On June 10th, the board heard testimony from Mr. Coty regarding four issues. One was the reasons for why the project is designed the way it is. Two was the sidewalks on Precipiny Road. Three was the water tank and pump house. And four was the turning radius. With regard to the sidewalk, it must be pointed out that Precipiny Road is a county road. And as such, this board does not have jurisdiction over a county road. And doesn't have the jurisdiction to require a sidewalk. That said, the applicant understands this board's desire to create pedestrian connectivity in Precipiny. And therefore, the application has no, the applicant has no objection to either installing a sidewalk or providing the funding for the township to install the sidewalk as a condition of approval, provided that Morris County approves same. With regard to the turning radius, your board engineer wanted some widening of the turning radius. Again, we will work with him and the county to provide, to further that objective and to widen that right turn as much as we can. To the extent that there is any property that's speed restricted over there, I don't know whether it is or it isn't. I'm advised that there's not here, that all of this is within the public right of way. Obviously, that will be looked at. But we'll get as wide of a turn there as the county will permit. I can represent to the board that Mr. Coty has spoken with the county. And Morris County is amenable to working with us to widen that turn and to create the sidewalk. We just want to know what the board would like to see with regard to a sidewalk. We'll agree with it, working with the county as a condition of approval. Regarding the water tank and the pump house, Mr. Coty testified that the same were needed because the existing water supply does not support the current fire suppression need. The applicant has agreed, as a condition of approval, that it will meet with the Parsippany Water Department to see if an enhanced connection can be established at the site at a cost consistent with the cost of the tank and the pump house. If so, the applicant will either provide the work for that connection or fund it. If the cost of such connection exceeds the cost of the tank and the pump house, and the township determines that it wants to enhance the system as a whole, we talked about that, then the applicant will contribute to the cost of such enhanced connection to the project in an amount equal to what the applicant would have paid for the tank and the pump house. Again, those would be conditions of approval. On June 10th, the board also heard testimony from project architect Kyle Ferio regarding the building design, and Alan Lotheian regarding traffic. We had Mr. Lotheian back on July 8th to answer questions relevant to the application, which were not previously asked. And while we do want to be deferential to residents on traffic issues, again, I can't say this enough, but this is a county road. This is not a road on which the board has jurisdiction. This is a county road. And the testimony was that as a county road, this road is intended to provide, among other things, trucks to access Route 287. That is what this road is intended to do. And that is the testimony of, the traffic testimony of the engineer, which is uncontradicted by any expert in this application. Moreover, New Jersey law is clear, even if it were a municipal road, that an application for permitted use cannot be legally denied on the basis of traffic volume alone. And I cite too the Dunkin' Donuts case, which is actually an appellate division case. It's a well-known case. It is relied on and has been relied on since the mid-1980s by boards all across the state. Because that is the well-established law in the state of New Jersey. And again, the use here was unanimously approved by the council. As the board is aware, because Parsippany opted into the Highlands, which I believe was, and I think tonight was confirmed, occurred at the very end of the prior administration, there is a need for Highlands consistency. We received a letter from the Highlands Council, J D, June 18th, where inconsistency was determined, subject to six conditions. I think it was five the last time. I was mistaken. It was six. I discussed those conditions with the applicant, and we responded to the Highlands Council by letter dated June 28th. Our letter indicated that the applicant was agreeable to five of the six conditions. Condition number five being objectionable. And as the board recall, that was the condition that wanted to limit the number of bays and the number of parking spaces. The Highlands Council then sent a confirming email, which rescinded its objection to the number of bays. And with regard to the parking, it was agreed that the minimum amount of parking would be provided. The balance of the parking would be banked, without need to come back to the board or the Highlands. It could be constructed and utilized as tenant demands required. But in the initial instance, we would not be providing that parking. And we will agree, obviously, to those items as conditions of approval as well. Lastly, the board heard testimony on July 8th from the applicant's planner, Richard Fifield, regarding the deviations requested by the applicant, none of which were discussed by any members of the public tonight. Suffice to say, we believe that the record clearly establishes the basis for those deviations. On July 8th, public comment commenced. It is clear that those opposed to the application simply oppose the use. Respectfully, I submit that it is not the board's place or jurisdiction to determine what the use should or should not be. The use is the province of the township council. And the township council unanimously determined this use to be permitted at this location. Again, we met privately with the Petersons before submitting this application. Ms. Peterson admitted at the July 8th hearing, under cross-examination, that while she did not support a warehouse, that this was a good plan. Mr. Coty testified that this plan is the one, the very one, that was presented to the Board of Education, the Petersons, Petersons and the Park Troy Funeral Home, all of whom we met with on the same day, prior to the commencement of the hearings. The applicant, again, used objections to... The applicant, again, used objections to Mr. Ruger's testimony and his participation in the proceeding. He identified himself as the Director of Policy of the Highlands Coalition, and gave his Highlands Coalition address. He is not a lawyer, so to preserve the record, we requested his testimony be stricken from the record. Moreover, Mr. Ruger's attempt to practice law on behalf of the Highlands Coalition was also improper, which is why the law requires organizations such as the Highlands Coalition to be represented by council. And I do want to point out that there was reference made, I'll get to that. Mr. Cote indicated, and I will reiterate, because I was there, that the applicant met with representatives of the Highlands Council right here in Town Hall, prior to this application being filed. And the Highlands Council indicated that based upon the nature of this site, the consistency determination would be forthcoming, and they had no objection to our filing the application. As to the outrageous allegations made by Mr. Ruger, that these meetings are illegal, I want to make three points. One, this, again, this is why the law requires organizations to be represented by an attorney, which he is not. Two, we proceeded with this application in tandem with the Highlands Council, and I think the correspondence back and forth shows this. In my letter, I indicated we were getting to the last hearing. And number three, Mr. Ruger just couldn't be more wrong on the law. So brought here tonight, the 2024 edition of the New Jersey Zoning and Land Use Administration, the Cox Book, we, land use lawyers kind of use it as a authority of sorts on things. And I just want to read very quickly, front page 205, which is in section 14-3.2. Because Mr. Ruger's assertion, and we heard it again from Mr. Homiak, was that the board was improper by hearing this application because it shouldn't have been deemed complete. In Cox, "It should be noted that a board might decide to proceed to hear a matter even where the application isn't complete, allowing an applicant to supply certain required information at a later stage of the proceedings. In no sense is the filing of a complete application a jurisdictional prerequisite to board action, as is the case in the giving of statutory notice. Again, the complete application provision is of importance only with respect to the starting of the clock." This board acted entirely appropriately, and we acted in tandem with the Highlands Council. And assertions to the contrary are just plain wrong. Mr. Chairman, my client has been working with the township. But before I say that, I also want to say that I understand and appreciate the comments that have been made by folks that have come up here. Obviously, they have very strong opinions, and we all have to respect them. But we also have a process, and it's difficult when you have areas where there are a mixture of things going on, uses, folks who've been here, traffic, et cetera. But the reality is here that we went through a very long public process that included multiple steps of public hearings before this board, before the town council, et cetera. And so this is really an as-of-right application. Again, I have a client, and that's, that is, I think, true. I just want to say, Mr. Chairman, that my client has been working with the township and its various departments and the like, including this board, to repurpose this vacant office building, which Precipiny has determined is a blight on this community. And we look forward to working, continuing our work with the board and with the township in furtherance in that regard. And we thank the board for your time and attention, and we just ask that the board here follow the law, which is pretty clear, and approve this application. Thank you.
Okay, this closes the evidentiary portion of tonight's hearing. I think we should take a five-minute break. So, five-minute break. Running Board for Monday, July 22nd, is reconvening. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Barberio.
Here.
Mr. Didi.
Here.
Mr. DiPiero.
Here.
Mr. Muley.
Here.
Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Yeah.
Mr. Stanziel.
Here.
Chairman Dinnamore.
Here. All right, we have ended the evidentiary portion of tonight's meeting. I'm going to ask the board if they would like to move to go into conference to discuss what we've heard here, or if they would like to move a motion.
Can we make a comment, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, absolutely.
If you will. Because of the proximity of this application to Eastlake School and to the Par Troy Funeral Home, there is no way that I can support this application.
Other comments by members of the...
I have a lot. I just want to say, this has been our fifth meeting, I believe. Project engineers, they testified that everything can be done to make sure that there be no contamination of Lake Precipiny. We heard from a sound engineer that testified that sound will be deflected, and no, I mean, no walls are perfect, we get that, we hear Route 80 all day long, Route 287. I need some serious clarification, because was the Board of Education notified and were they met with? And if they were not, no one from them came up and objected to any question, they didn't question any witness, they didn't make any concerns today. So I believe that they were notified, and they have the problem with this project. So I'm going to go out my gut there and say that they knew about it, and they said everything's fine. So, but I heard some yelling before in the back, that maybe that wasn't true. Were they met with?
Yeah, they were met with.
Okay, thank you. And the council also voted unanimously to make this a warehouse project, but I still have to go with my own thoughts, my own feelings. And children's safety is always number one for me. Yes, there are sidewalks. I assume we're going to have more crossing guard, because many kids are going to come from Park Q or Park, whatever they call it, and have to walk to Eastlake. It's within one mile, I believe. If you're less than a mile, you have to walk. There's no transportation. I do believe that we'll make sure they are safe. I know there's some concern about the air quality in the area, but my gut is telling me to vote no on this. So that's Robb.
All right. Other members of the board have commentary on this?
Yes, I do. A lot of questions were directed at me tonight with regards to this application. Precipiny is in a very tough situation, and I made those comments, and I continue to make them with regards. Now, I will say, yes, the school board was met with. Public safety will be dealt with. Questions were asked about the police department. Just so you know, that when I came back as mayor, we were down to 81 deployable police officers. Now we're up to 99 deployable police officers. So we have really, have really directed public safety. With regards to a young boy being killed, I was there, and it was really disheartening. We are, we beefed up prior to that, we beefed up the public safety process here in the town. We're going to continue to do that. I will be meeting with the county representatives, because that's a county road, Littleton Road, and Precipiny Road is also a county road. I already contacted the state, so we're going to have a meeting on public safety here in the township. Now, here's the dilemma that we have in the township. Number one, these projects that have come to us are either going to be one or two things: industrial, commercial, or residential. Precipiny is carrying over right now 463 affordable housing units into the next round. Okay, the next round. So that means if you times that by four, that's how many units we're going to have to build. Round four is coming in January of 2025, at the end of the year. We're going to probably get hit with another 1,000 affordable housing units with regards, and they're really high-density housing. It's more, you know, like I said, I'm an affordable housing administrator, it's not all that easy. But it's going to impact the community at large very... Now, the woman that was here before, the planner, when it comes to affordable housing, and it comes to any type of housing, one thing you cannot use is off-site traffic. We learned that with Park, we learned that with Lanidex, that we cannot deny a project based on traffic that's off-site. And what is off-site? Precipiny Road. Precipiny Road is an off-site, and we cannot deny any application when it comes to affordable housing. Okay, so now, the dilemma is this: what will happen to 30 Lanidex? Me, in my opinion, I've been doing this for a while, I've seen it in other towns where I was an administrator, that's going to be four or five-story building of housing. That's my opinion, and that will be detrimental to the town as well, and to the school system, because as you, as Pat, you said, with regards to the pilot programs, one thing the pilot program does is that we get to keep commercial properties here, and we, we can distract any type of housing units. Let's talk about the 19. Right now, we have 19 vacant office spaces in Precipiny. We're going to be going probably to 25 vacant office spaces in Precipiny. 25. So that shift in the burden, you're going to see 70% of your taxes are going to come from residents, and 30% are going to come from commercial. Well, this is why things like warehousing, we got Lifetime Fitness, we have Top Golf, these are the things that drive away the housing portion of it. Okay, now, you talked about public safety on the road with the warehouse. Of course, we're going to beef it up. We're not going to allow any, any trucks on Allen Town Road. We're not going to allow any of that. Now, can we be there 24/7? No, you can't be there 24/7. Okay, so I'm in favor of this project only for those reasons. One, we don't want to see any more housing in the township. We're going to see it. We're not going to stop it. We're just not going to, but we can reduce it as much as we can. I make a commitment of public safety, I always have. We'll talk about our fire departments, as Mrs. Theobald said, with regards to the volunteers. Well, no one's volunteering anymore to begin with, and that's a shame. I wish, the fact that matter, that more people would volunteer for our ambulance, for our fire districts, and stuff like that. It's not an easy decision, but it's a decision that, in my opinion, that we have to either punt, and then come for the next round, and then, you know what's going to happen? What's happened right now, you're looking at Phase 1 at Lanidex across the street. Phase 2 is coming, and when Phase 2 comes, it's going to congest the area even more. So I hope I answered also the questions, and if not, please call my office, and I'll answer more.
Sleep with family homes, how about that?
Thank, I just stated my opinion, you gave me your opinions. Do I have to like it? No, it's not, it's not an easy decision. It truly isn't an easy decision to make. But if you think that a four or five-story building with 300 cars is not a lot, that's going to be a lot as well, so. And the public safety, we, I will, and believe me, our police department is tops. I could tell you the Lake Precipiny residents on Kingston Road, they contacted me saying, "Thank you, thank you." More tickets are being handed out, a lot of residents, a lot of residents are getting tickets. If you're going to speed on our roads, I'm telling you right now, you're going to get a ticket. If you're texting, you're going to get a ticket. Enforcement, 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 signs do nothing. We're going to enforce, and we're going to hire more police officers.
Other members of the board have comments on this at this time? Hearing and seeing, none from them. I am going to have to state that I agree with the mayor. I think that the state is responsible for our having to put this here. I think that the requirements of affordable housing, the requirements that are put on us by outside agencies make it very difficult to have home rule. Once upon a time, we had home rule, that's changed. We don't have that anymore. We have to meet the standards of the state, and sometimes they give us a little bit of flexibility as to what we do. So all of this development, all of it, has been through both Republican and Democratic administrations. So it is not something that we can do anything other than to try to ride, rather than trying to stop. We can't stop. This is the one thing we can do, is we can try to deflect it with other options. The witnesses presented showed that the number, even though we talk about 24/7 truck traffic, much of that is attenuated by the fact that this is meant not to be a major distribution warehouse, but a local-use warehouse, so that the traffic will not be continuous and all the time. It will be occasional, it's just that they are available to do it 24/7. So I am, I am going to vote in favor of this, because I do not see any way that what would come about wouldn't be worse. So...
And if I can add, Chairman, with regards to the number of units, you're looking at 6,000 more units in Precipiny at the end of 2025. That's a lot of units, that's a lot of population increase, that's a lot of traffic, and it's something that we're trying to avoid. We're trying to take as many properties as we can off the rolls for any type of high-density housing, and this is one of them. And there's other ones, I don't have the luxury to say, "I'm coming up here as a private citizen. I'm the mayor 24/7," and that's how people look at it. I don't know how any other board in the town can actually even say that, but I can't do that. I have to come here as the mayor, I have to come here 24/7, and that's what I have to do. And I also have to be candid and upfront and honest with you, and that's exactly what I'm doing. I mean, the fact is that, do I want to see anything else built in Precipiny? Absolutely not. I don't. I grew up here. I went to high school with you, and we graduated together. I don't want to, I don't want to see all this building going up, but the chairman said it. The word you really need to understand, mandate it. The state mandates this. We have no control. And when the planner here said, you know, "Well, just sue." You're suing the courts, you're not just suing, you're suing this New Jersey State Supreme Court, who makes the decision on affordable housing. So how do you sue somebody that makes the decision? Okay, that's difficult for us. I've met with many mayors, and we are thinking of suing. I have no clue where it's going to get us, I have no clue whatsoever, but we're trying to get a delay. Maybe, maybe we can get a reduction in the number of units that are going to be built here in Precipiny. But you're not just talking about Precipiny Road, you're talking about 202, Littleton Road, you're talking about everywhere in this town that is going to have vacant office space. And I'm going to name two vacant office spaces right now. One is Wyndham Hotels, that's going to be vacant. DSM on 45 Waterview Plaza, those are huge pieces of property. Okay, that's going to be earmarked unless we do something, unless we meet with the developer, unless we say... Now, a lot of people say, "Well, why don't we put this here? Why don't we put that there?" You know what? I thought the same thing, but guess what? We don't own the property. I have no clue who bought the property on 30 Lanidex. That was sold from somebody. Okay, somebody sold that property to make a profit. Now, we don't own any of these properties. And I'll give you one example, is Waterview. We tried to purchase Waterview for $7.5 million, and then the Supreme Court, on March 10, 2015, came out to affordable housing rules, that property went from $7.5 million in value to $20, $25 million in value. That's what, that's, that's the way things are going right now. And I have to tell you, Lake Precipiny is the area that I grew up in, I mean, they're just converting houses into these big units. Okay, can't stop it, they meet the requirements, they meet all the requirements here in the township. The problem is, we don't like what's going on, but we have to make a decision. We have to make a decision that's best for the township. And it's either you're going to have a five or six-story building, not just there, you're looking at all this entire town. We are trying to do everything we can, the council, the administration, to try to avoid all the housing in the township, because it's going to eventually, when you have 6,000 units, even with the Rutgers study, you're looking at probably 500 students, and I'm going low, extra students. And all of a sudden, it just keeps going up, up, and up. Well, this, by doing what we're doing here, that is not going to happen. There's going to be no housing there, no, no, anything like that. And believe me when I tell you, if a truck goes on that road, you call my office, we will come down there, we will handle it, we will take care of it. You can nod your head all you want, that's fine, because I get it, I'm only being candid with you, I'm only being honest with you. The fact is that we are going to, we have beefed up our police department, and we're going to beef it up more. We should be, we should be at probably close to 110 police officers. That's what our ordinance calls for. We're not. We were down to 81, now we're beefing it up. So, thank you, Chairman.
All right. Are there any other members of the board have comments at this time? Is there... Is there somebody willing to make a movement on a resolution at this time?
I'll make a motion for application 24:506, 2030 Lanadex Urban Renewal LLC, 20-30 Lanadex Plaza West Block 226, colon, three, I'm sorry, lots, colon, 3 and 3.2 Zone, colon, ROL, preliminary. And final major site plan, major soil move permit for construction of warehouse with office space, loading docks, drive-in ramps, trash compactor, bay, and parking. Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second. Sure. Should we list the requirements?
Yeah, put by all the... What are all the... So, the condition is the sidewalk installation, subject to county. Council, I would suggest maybe an if and when agreement, subject to the county approval, but it also depends on the timing of it. Rather just construct it as part of the application if the county gives you the go-ahead, but that's one of the conditions.
That's fine. We're, we just want to know what you want.
Sure.
And we'll go up to the county with it together.
Okay. The pump house, you will meet with the Township Water Commission to determine its feasibility to connect to the main, if the cost is greater than what you're willing to construct a pump house, or if you'll make a contribution equal to the cost of the pump house so that the town can install an upgrade to the water main in that area. You'll comply or work with the county for the truck turning template, turning radius, adjusting the curb line within the public right of way, and you'll work with the engineer to try to achieve the maximum turning radius allowable, and that will be at the county direction as well. Comply with the noise regulations. And any other open items in Mr. Kenji Anor's report that are, have not been addressed, I'll kind of leave it as a general comment.
Yeah, I think everything else, we, we were okay with everything else that was in...
With the report correct. So that will be...
Andrew, what's there anything you recall that's hanging out there? I think you've kind of...
Those were the big-ticket items.
Yeah.
That would just be a catch-all provision, and then the requirements of the soil moving application, pre-con meeting and the like.
The only other condition is the, with regard to the Highlands.
Of the Highlands, yes.
That we would, we would be doing banked parking in accordance, I mean, for right now purposes, in accordance with the correspondence between my office and the Highlands. Basically, my letter of June 28th, which the Highlands responded back, said it was acceptable to them, so that would be another condition.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other conditions that anybody can remember? No, I don't remember any either. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Barberio.
Yes.
Didich.
Yes.
DiPiero.
Yes.
Muley.
No.
Napolitano.
No.
Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. Stansiel.
Yes.
Dingsmore.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Appreciate your time as always.
Okay. Thank you all for participating. I think we learned a lot and we can do. We came to a result that is very satisfying, but at the same time...
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say a...